I'd like to call meeting back to order.
You can try it.
Next item on the agenda, under new business, is the lease purchase of MacBook Air M4s, laptops, and Apple TVs. Director Malazo.
Chair White, Board Directors, Dr. Thomas, Marcus Malazo, Director Technology. In your board packet, you have items from the proposal. The first is a memo that we submitted regarding the proposal of 800 MacBook Airs and 600 Apple TVs. The second is the resolution. And then there's also the lease agreement is in there as well. What we're proposing is a four-year Apple lease at 0% finance for four years. So I'll open it up to question, any questions that you may have, and here to be a resource.
All right, I'll first entertain a motion to accept the resolution approving the lease purchase of the MacBook Airs and the Apple TVs. Is there a motion on the table?
So made.
By Director Bullion, second by Director France. Discussion or questions?
I just have a question. You answered a lot of questions, so thank you. Really helped to understand why we're going down this path. Do you ever compare like, like, Apple products versus HP products? Like, and how does that compare from a cost standpoint? I mean, I understand that our kids are all on iPads or they have iPads, but how does that, did you look, do you look at that, or is it?
We did, and thank you for the question.
Yeah. And I'm sorry I didn't get that in time. I just, someone actually asked me in the last couple of days, so.
No, I appreciate the question. So when, when we looked at the lease for the consolidation of staff devices, we did look at MacBook Airs and HP desktops. So part of the comparison was when we, when we compare, I don't want to use apples to apples, but when we compare apples to Windows devices, you try to spec them with similar specs to the best of your ability. So we, we have the quote from Apple for an M4 MacBook Air. And then we have a quote for an HP Z2, which has similar specs. We got that quote from a preferred vendor, and that, that pricing was on a state contract. So it's extremely aggressive pricing. And the MacBook Airs are $271 less per unit than the desktop that we spec.
Pretty comparable.
Any other questions?
I had one follow-up too. Thank you for answering everything else, but the 600 Apple TVs, how, I don't know how many classrooms we have. Does that include like all of the conference rooms and the classrooms, or how, like, is that why there's so many?
It'll be instructional spaces. So, and I'm a visual learner, so I brought a little bit of.
Thank you.
When we talk about Apple TVs, we're not talking about monitors. We are talking about the device, and I'll let you pass it down. So that allows the MacBook Airs to connect through AirPlay. The idea would be that we connect that Apple TV directly to a projection system in the classroom. It allows for a new and different way of mirroring than what we currently have, which is we're using a legacy product to connect that's running on the desktop PC. And then the MacBook Airs connect to that, which is connected to the classroom AV equipment. The other question was, and when we discussed it a couple meetings ago, it was about legacy peripherals, like 10-key keyboard, the extra, the larger monitor, the legacy mouse. So we found this unit, which is a USB-C hub that we plan on using as the docking station. And that hub allows all the connectivity to the legacy equipment. So you can use that as a docking station, if you will. Connect your external monitor, your existing keyboard, your existing mouse, and then it also has Ethernet as well. So if you prefer that higher wired connection, it has it. So that is what we're proposing to be the docking station. We can get that at bulk pricing. And with the MacBook Airs, the Apple TVs, and that unit, it's still less than what the desktops were pricing on it.
Is this already considered in the pricing?
It's not included in the lease. That would be an additional cost to the technology department that we would cover under hardware account code.
Yeah, sorry, and I, just to clarify, the question was like around the number. It felt high, but I don't know how many classrooms we have, and especially if we're considering a building closure. Is that for backups and for all the conference rooms? Or is that why? Okay, that's right.
Yes, any learning spaces.
Which every space is covered, got it.
Yep, and additional backups as well.
Yep. And then what happens to the old devices? Do we get credit for them, or when we turn them back in, or?
Yeah, thank you for the question. The legacy MacBooks, we, we had a lease agreement through Providence Capital, and there's a remarketing agreement within that lease. So when we go to replace legacy MacBook Airs, they have to go back to Providence Capital for remarketing, but yes, we do get a portion of that value back to the district.
All right, if there's no further questions or discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Oh gosh, I did it again. It's right in front of me. Director Olstead.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
And Director Mason.
Aye.
And aye. Now the motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a joint powers agreement for SROs. Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, Board of Directors. This is our updated SRO contract with the city of Prior Lake. We have a three-year contract with Prior Lake and a five-year with Savage, so we're just out of different sequence. So we will be doing the same with Savage, very similar contracts that we have, and obviously definitely a partnership we want to maintain. And you see the contract before you, and it just includes the updated contract costs for that, and it's built into our budget for the anticipated growth of those contracts over year over year.
All right, is there a motion to accept the joint powers agreement as presented?
So made.
By Director France, second by Director Johnson. There's no further discussion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, so in the agreement, it says that it's effective 2025 and expires on 2030. So is it a five-year agreement?
I'm sorry, this is a five-year agree.
Okay.
This one's a five-year agreement. The other one is, I had them flipped around.
That's okay, I just, point of clarification, I guess, so thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions or discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries a seven zero. Next on the agenda is a resolution to establish dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the school board, which would be July 29th through August 12th. Dr. Thomas.
Actually, that's all I was going to share.
Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion to accept those dates and that resolution.
So made.
By Director Atkinson, second by Director Johnson. This does require a roll call vote. Director Olstead.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
And Director France.
Aye.
And Director Mason.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. Next is the service agreement between the city of Prior Lake and IST 719 for absentee voting on November, on the November 4th, 2025 special election. So I'll entertain a motion to accept that service agreement.
So made.
By Director Bullion, second.
Second.
By Director Olstead. There's no discussion?
I have a question, actually.
Okay.
So will this election take place at City Hall?
Martha, would you want to?
All of the polling locations will be open on November 4th.
Okay.
But this, since the city has a question on the ballot.
Oh yeah, that makes sense.
There's a hierarchy, and so they have to conduct their city of Prior Lakes portion.
Yeah. Okay, but all the polling locations within Prior Lake will be?
In the school district.
In the district.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes sense because there's a question. Okay, okay, thank you for.
There's no other comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. And next is an approval of a resolution establishing procedures for counting of write-in votes for the school board election. Is there a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
So made.
By Director Johnson.
Second.
By Director France. Discussion? Okay, this does require a roll call vote. Director Olstead.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
And Director Mason.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. All right, next on the agenda is just a hopefully relatively quick discussion, just for a little historical perspective. For as far back as I can remember in the school district, we had what was called a building and grounds committee. It goes back to at least the 70s.
Facilities.
And it's been called different things. When I first got on it, it was built.
Finance and facilities, yeah.
And so through the years, as we were growing and doing a lot of building, it kind of morphed into more of a construction oversight type of committee. You guys called it something during the last building.
We combined finance and facilities into one.
Yep.
And then knocked off the facilities when the building construction ended.
And so I'm just wondering if it would, if the board would entertain the possibility of either adding a permanent board committee in the traditional building and grounds style, which would oversee, you know, help prioritize maintenance, give some assistance to Dr., or to Director Powers, or if combining again, adding a building kind of, you know, addition to the finance committee, if that makes sense. I mean, even though we are declining enrollment and all the things that we've had, you know, these discussions about tonight, we still have 10 buildings and hundreds and hundreds of acres and millions and millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure that need maintaining. And I'm just wondering if, if, if the board has any desire to move back in that direction, whether either it's, you know, a separate standing committee, or, or maybe re-upping the, the finance and, and building type style committee. I just wanted to do this because we don't have a study session this month, and I thought just a quick discussion, is there any desire to move back in that direction? I feel, having been on that committee for years and years and years, you know, before it was more of a construction style committee, I, I felt it was, it was very helpful, not just to the board, but the administration, to kind of have that little filter before stuff gets brought to the board as to why something might be prioritized over something else, just on a, on a regular basis. So I'm open to discussion or forget it, or wherever direction you guys want to go. Go ahead. Director Bullion.
First of all, I have a question. If, if you could share a little bit of perspective on when finance and building was, was combined? Just in some discussions regarding this, since the agenda has come out. And when I'm thinking about what our projections are going out, you know, five-ish years, enrollment and such, our building situation should remain constant for at least the near future. And so I would initially, without having us, you know, before discussing and hearing everybody's point of view, my thought would be a, a whole building committee might not be where we would want to go because we aren't really building, but definitely would like to know more about having that building portion in with finance, what that looks like. It seems, given what our budget forecasts are, that, you know, everything that we're doing has to do with finance. It's tied so closely together. So I would, I would act in this stage to vie for the, the combination of the finance and the building committee, not having a, another board committee.
Director Bullion, you asked about the history, and so even before I was elected to the board nine years ago, or almost 10 years ago now, they, they had finance as part of the facilities committee. So we called that the finance FS, EC, yeah, FLIRP. FLIRP, yeah. Fine range and long range, whatever. Long range planning. Because the cost of the, you know, obviously in our finances, the cost of that infrastructure, and we were going through bonds. So that was a huge piece of it, too, is having that committee look for the bonds. When the building stopped, when our last bond and all that, the referendum passed and that stopped, and we made the simultaneous choice to not make it only an internal committee, because it was really made up of administration, the finance director, it had two, one board member at first, and then we, was it two when you were there, or is it just?
Oh, it was two, yeah.
Yeah, so it was, I know it was one a while ago, and then it became two, and then it stayed two. And we invited the public into that finance committee. That's when it switched and became primarily a finance committee with, of course, the numbers for infrastructure, building, depreciation, long-term facilities, maintenance built into that with the focus being overall financial management. When we had the FLIRP version, we also had our construction contractors and maintenance contractors part of that. We no longer have that. So that is also a consideration of why it moved to be overwhelmingly finance. My concern about creating yet another committee and not just expanding or making a, making a conscious decision to expand maybe the definition of the finance committee is going to be on staff and administration time to do yet another committee. That would be my concern. We're already incredibly lean, if not under subsistence level in our administration, and to have yet another committee is, is management. And, and the, the cost benefit in that, I, I do not see the benefit of having that. But I do agree with, particularly as we're, regardless of whether growing or shrinking, to add an additional consideration and maybe even section of the existing finance committee to talk about the cost of the reconfiguration, the moves, the building sale, et cetera, and have that be a piece of that. I'm not the one who chairs that. The Director Ryder will chair that, so, and so that will be on her shoulders, obviously. So that's, that's my input, but that does add another section to that meeting that, that would be additional to, to administration.
And I would just add, I would also envision Director Powers to be joining, so from a co-admin standpoint, to basically resurrect the finance long-range planning committee to do both finance as well as the operational support, LTFM, et cetera. Because to your point, Vice Chair Bullion, it, it all comes down to dollars and cents. So whether it's the reconfiguration consolidation plan, or if it's the projects of the, the shipping decks that Director Powers is talking about, that's all going to come down to dollars and cents. And so I think enhancing that finance committee with perspectives from folks from the ops side, from our community that has that interest, I think would just naturally, you know, kind of fit together as well.
Yeah, I think adding a grounds element in there, too, to, to throw, because I've been on many baseball fields and, you know, not here, but, you know, and we've had to move fields, you know, due to, to poor, poor management and things like that, so.
Part of that, too.
Yeah, you know, and I'm sure Jeff Marshall would be, I don't want to speak for him, but I think that would be a great element to add into. And obviously, that all trickles down to dollars and cents, and I know people have already talked about, you know, our football field's coming up on its age.
Turf fees.
So that's where I think maybe, and I don't, you know, I agree, putting a whole nother committee together, I completely agree, it's a, it's a, right? Nobody wants to add something else to the plate, but maybe we can figure out a time schedule to where we're narrowing down. This is where, you know, we're going to almost combine all these things together and focus on, instead of having our individual, like, committees this month, right? If that's what it is, maybe, you know, this quarter, right? We're going to hyper-focus on this element, right? I may, that's the way, way we look at it.
Yeah, because I can't imagine that, you know, the building and grounds or facilities conversations would be necessarily regular or, but there, there will be times that I would think that it would be helpful for Dan to be able to come to the committee and say.
Generator turf fees, stuff like that, that's huge parts of the finance.
Whatever it is, so.
And having served on the finance committee for the past six months, I think there's definitely the bandwidth to add onto the agenda as well, and looking forward with Director Ryder as well to help, you know, work up those agendas and what we're planning on discussing. So I think there's definitely room within, from what we've discussed so far.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I mean, I was going to say, actually, we've kind of run over a couple of times, too, so I don't know if we'd have to expand or, you know, increase the duration or of the beating or change the time, maybe, but I'm, I think I'm supportive of that idea.
Okay, so moving forward, what would you suggest?
So if it's a will of the board, you know, I'll work with Lisa and Dan Powers and the two board reps. And then, you know, we'd probably want to cast out for folks who have a passion about buildings and grounds on top of, of the finance works that we have. So I would just add addition, I would recommend that we would add additional attendees from the buildings and grounds and ops side that would regularly participate, and I think just be part of the discussion.
I would add to that, maybe if there are partners like PLA Y or people of interest that use our fields and grounds regularly, they might be good additions to that committee.
Absolutely, absolutely. So yeah, we, I think we can just adjust the members. If the board's okay, we would just work with the two board directors and adjust the membership accordingly.
Yeah.
And rewrite the scope a little bit.
And we do, do we have some, we do have already some new members, so I would like to kind of go back and, you know.
Yep.
Understand, I think one of them particularly has good grounds, our building, building background, if I remember correctly.
Looking quizzically.
I don't know how I feel yet.
And also, as I came in, this committee existed. I mean, it was being sunset, I mean, I didn't initiate the sunset, but it was being sunset as I came in, so I got a little overlap of the FLIRP. And, and I understand the rationale for it. I think it's very, you know, you want to talk about optimizing resources of time and people's commitment. I would just adjust the scope of finance and resurrect FLIRP, or whatever it's going to be called. Because I think the interest is already there on the finance side. We round out the buildings and grounds side, add Dan to be a co-director with Director Ryder, team's there. And it's going to be very efficient, in my opinion.
Okay.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, then we'll look forward to an update on that. Appreciate the discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, next on the agenda, under policy. We have for a second and final reading tonight, 203.7, 204, 205, 206, 207, 209, 212, and 215. Is there a motion to accept these all in one, one vote?
So made.
By Director Bullion, is there a second?
Second.
By Director Johnson. Any discussion?
I thought we were going to take 209 off of that. You just read it as part of that?
I believe the earlier motion to amend the agenda moved all three of the, under letter B, all three to a second reading. Did I remember that right?
Yeah, the, the three 200s.
That's correct.
I, I still have my same concern about all of them, and particularly the public hearings one. That is inappropriate for us. We didn't have one before, there was a reason for that, and as I stated, there's a conflation of forums and hearings. Hearings are legal proceedings, forums are not. The language in there that's been added is not appropriate, and also the reason why we didn't have that before is we delegated truth and taxation hearings to the finance department for a reason. The board is not capable nor qualified to hold those or to manage those, so therefore it became a procedural item that was in the organizational meeting, was sent and delegated to the finance director.
Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five two. And then moving down to letter B, first reading, policy 904. Either one of you two want to, any updates, since we didn't discuss last time? Has there been any in the last, since our last meeting, has there been any, any input from other board members sent to you, redlining, anything?
No.
Other than what we spoke about at the study session, that 209, 904 was introduced after the board already voted for it without any board discussion of reintroducing it as a policy. And then, of course, the language in there is, was misrepresented, as well as the language in there is not appropriate.
I can annotate on that, if you don't mind? So I'm going to read directly from our website now, and I'm quoting, "For the 2425 school year, we have planned a comprehensive review of policies in the 700, 800, and 900 series. Additionally, we will conduct the required annual review of policies 506, 722, and 806." That is on our website, so it was already scheduled to be there. I'm not done.
And 904 was voted for in June.
So now, yes, the previous school year.
Yes.
That's correct, not the 2425 school year.
It wasn't on there to be renewed every year.
The correct year for it to be redone was the 2425 school year.
Yes.
It was done in the 2324 school year.
And it was done for a reason before you got on the board, because Director Bullion had asked for us to discuss it, and we expedited it.
2425 school year. That is exactly what it is.
With all due respect, Director Johnson, 904 was.
Director France, I'm still talking.
Everybody relax here, all right? Just take, Director Johnson, finish your statement, and then Mary, you can, you can cut it.
So, to continue, I'll, I'll read directly from the email from Director Herman to add to it. "Thank you for your valuable feedback during our December 12th, 2425 Policy Advisory Committee Meeting. Attached are the final drafts of the policies for your review, with the exception of policies 902 and 904. Policy 904, based on requests for additional information, this policy will be revisited at the next PAC meeting." So that came out January 17th.
I understand that. Who requested it? Because the board had just voted on it. It had never gone through the board, ever.
Being as it is part of the 900 series, and that is the year, right? The 2425 school year was the correct year for it to be redone.
And it was.
And that year started in July.
Okay, let me finish, because you weren't here. Director Bullion had asked in 2023, and again in early 2024, to have it renewed, or have it reviewed for signs. We had discussed it at, I think, at least more than one study sessions, because you did a thumbs up for it. It was expedited because of the request. That's why it was voted on in June, reviewed by the board and voted on in June of 2024. It was expedited ahead, instead of starting with the full schedule on June 30th for the 900s, 904 was moved to June of 2024.
Out of cycle. And that would have put it out of cycle.
Director Johnson, it actually was expedited within the cycle to be done sooner than later because of the request from Director Bullion. It was discussed, so it would go back on its three-year cycle. After the board votes, Robert's rules has, has rules. If the board votes, in order to bring it back up, the board has to have a discussion because it was now brought up, again, expedited out of schedule, without any discussion at the board table. The, 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 the direction came through somewhere of the committee. I was chair in December, it never passed through me, and I was on the policy committee before that, when the entire cycle was started.
Okay, so.
How this got brought up, out of sequence, after it was already voted on, and it was supposed to start on its other three-year schedule, is something that was never discussed at the board. That's my first concern. The second concern is the misrepresentation for the policy itself. And that is, that is a concern that, that bears on the integrity of this board.
Okay, so I, I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't say in here that every 900 series was planned. every 900 series was planned except policy 904. Right?
But, but we did. So who brought it up? Because...
Well, that was in December of 2024, and as chair, you would have been responsible.
Yes, and nobody brought it up to me. So how did it get brought up without the chair and the rest of the board knowing?
Well, I don't know.
Can I interject? Oh, go ahead. Go, you go ahead, cause you're on, you're also on the committee.
Director Bullion?
Thank you.
Um, I'm not interested in, I'm not interested in the back and forth. I think, given the fact that my name was brought into the conversation regarding a request from May of 2023, that is accurate. As a board at that time, I had asked for signage, not the policy. I had asked for a board discussion regarding the signage in buildings, because the community had emailed the board before I was ever even elected. That has just been a, a, a place of concern. So in May of 2023, I asked in a study session if that would be the will of the board to have a discussion regarding it. And it was. And sometimes, what I've learned in two and a half years of serving on the board is something, some things in the district seem to, seem to move quickly. Some things seem to move slowly. As I had, maybe on two occasions, I, I don't know how many, I don't keep track like that, I had brought up at the board table again, that I had asked for that, and, and it was the will of the board to have the discussion. I think where we're having concern over this, this policy, in talking with Director Herman, who is no longer here, so it's, it's hard to talk about her because she's not here to defend. But my understanding is that the 900s were always on the schedule. And so at the last meeting, when the question was, arose, how did this get back on the docket? After, you know, it was a long meeting, it was, it, it was a long meeting. And there was a lot of conversation and frustration. And I think that after the meeting, it was clear that that, the 900s were always on it. And Director Herman expressed frustration that, you know, the question was asked, she didn't answer at the time, and none of us real, like, you know, none of us put it on the schedule, but it, it was always on the schedule. The 900s were always on the schedule. And so, instead of wasting time on, you know, who did what or where, the, the, I've heard, you know, from the community in open forum tonight, the concerns that were brought forward, that it was out of sequence. I don't think that that's, I don't, I hear that concern, and I hear the questions, but I, I, after, you know, the last meeting and talking with Director Herman, I don't believe that's the case. It was always on the schedule, so I don't believe the out of sequence, I don't believe it was out of sequence. The other concerns that have been talked about, 904, what has been brought forward since that last meeting? No one has brought any specific questions, redlines, or like what to add or subtract. And I think if we could just focus our discussion to specifics, instead of what happened when, we can move forward together as a board. And that's what I propose we do.
Okay, so here's the thing, and, and, and I do have the, if I could get my juice back, on my laptop. It was brought up in May, it was actually brought up before then. You actually brought it up before then. May was your second request to do the thumbs up to talk about signage. It was actually discussed in that meeting that it is covered in policy 904, and 904 will be discussed according to the schedule. Can you wait? The answer was yes, I can wait to discuss the policy. Then it was brought up again. And then the discussion was, with the policy committee, was, we're gonna then expedite that. And even though it wasn't supposed to start until after July 1st, they had room, and they brought it up in June. And it was discussed at the board. And that's why a policy that's normally on a three-year approval schedule got moved up very first in, in an early portion of that next year. That's why there was so much confusion of, we already voted on this. It was voted on in June 2024. It is on a three-year schedule. So if the 900s wasn't supposed to start until the 2425 school year, we actually took that and moved it up to satisfy the request for the discussion about signs. And it was discussed quite, quite voraciously, actually. It was a very, very long meeting. Several of the meetings regards that were long. But it was moved up and it was voted on. There was no discussion with the board chair, and I believe even in, I, I believe we had a couple of meetings with you, myself, and Dr. Thomas, and I did not take notes and, and record those or anything, so I don't remember when. But I remember when it was brought up again, did we discuss signs, because there was a list of things. And the answer was yes, we did. We talked about it in 904. And it was discussed very, very lightly again. I was as surprised as anyone to see it come back up in May of 2025. And I was contacted by people of the policy committee going, I have no idea what's going on. So I was totally surprised when then it came up to the board table. But when something is voted on like that, and it is on a three-year schedule, and the board voted on it, and it passed, and I believe it passed unanimously, if we're going to bring it up again with, within that three-year schedule, we're basically challenging the last board vote. And there's no problem with that, but it needs to be brought up at a board table, and it needs to be discussed, that are we going to bring something up that we just voted on, that doesn't need to be voted on, that isn't due again? And if the, if it was the will of board to actually discuss that policy, that would be fine. But as I've asked people, I've learned that there is a whole bunch of conversation and draft policies that were actually introduced that dealt a whole bunch of different things. And as we discussed in the last study session, legal actually got involved with a couple of draft policies, that the rest of the board wasn't even aware was being introduced to amend a policy that we had just voted on less than 12 months before. So it's, it's not that if somebody has a different opinion about it, that's one thing. But the procedure is, if the board voted, then, and, and the vote stands, you don't just re-challenge it in the background and just bring it back up again and say, hey, I wanna change. That's not how Robert's rules works. That's not how the procedure works. So if we want to go ahead and discuss it, then let's bring it up formally, have a vote on whether we want to amend policy 904, and stick it on the schedule like it should be. Okay? That's not a problem. The problem that I have is how it actually happened. That's a procedural issue. And then this, and, and it, because it's not, it's, it's a procedural issue, we rebroke procedure. Then the second thing comes in with the integrity of how it was introduced, which is a different discussion, not a discussion of procedure. So if we wanna talk about reintroducing policy 904 and have the board vote on whether we're going to take that again out of sequence and vote on it, that is, that is the will of the board. But we should do that, instead of just surprising everybody.
So how was it a surprise if it was on the schedule?
So the schedule, again, the schedule was set. We expedited that one because of the request to discuss signage, because it got brought up by you multiple times, and it was said we were gonna wait to policy 904. So with room in there, it was brought in slightly earlier, just slightly earlier, to expedite it. And that's why policy 904 was voted on in June of 2024, instead of July or August of 2024. That's the whole reason.
So my recollection of that was, is, is a little bit different. And again, when 904 came up and was voted on, the, the concerns regarding signs in the buildings weren't addressed. And so, in conversations that I, I had on my one-on-ones, and so on and so forth, a lot of that was going to be discussed with the strategic plan. We were rebranding, we were gonna, you know, be doing a lot of different things with signage, which has happened since the adoption of the strategic plan. And so, those didn't coincide. And I do, you know, I, I, I agree with you that when the, when I had brought it up the first time for, when there was a thumbs up, I don't remember ever bringing it up for two different thumbs up, just one. And it was mentioned, maybe, I think that even a, a director said, you know, maybe when we discuss 904, or however. That wasn't the stipulation of the discussion that I asked for.
And I would say, I would redirect the conversation, because when we did vote on it, there was discussion that Dr. Thomas did lead about reviewing the signage in general because of the new strategic plan. And that, that, I, I don't mean to throw you under the bus here, whatever, but...
No, I, I remember having conversations.
Yeah. And, and that was part of it, that, okay, here's our policy on signage, and then the review of the signs in the building, and what was gonna happen was gonna be part of the strategic plan. So when we voted on 904, that was something that was brought up by Dr. Thomas, and that, that I would defer to him.
Oh, Chair White, as being one of the, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, I guess I need some clarification then, because...
I, I think I can add some clarification.
Well, and maybe after, I make my comment. So, so you're right, the procedure should be followed. My question is, okay, it was expedited. Charles wasn't seated until January. How did it get brought up in discussion at the December policy meeting? I mean, I think, I think, I think the implication is that that Charles may be driving this somehow, but it was discussed before he was on the board. So how did, it was something happened at the policy committee level that...
That never made it to the board as a whole, by the way.
Right, but I'm just wondering how that, how that happened.
I think I can add some clarification. If you guys go back and watch the meeting in June, I went back and watched it. And Dr. Thomas, you specifically say, when we're reviewing, and it was a short conversation, that that policy, 904, had nothing to do with posters in the classroom. And it was more about other people handing out flyers. And, and we had talked about the election. I brought up a concern because of the election concerns, and, you know, different camps of vote yes or vote no. And so that, that actually jogged my memory. Thank you. I don't, sometimes don't have great memory. But then, I attended that December meeting, and I specifically remember Emily Herman saying something to the fact that Director Bullion, when we review 902, or whatever policy it was, within the 900 series, this policy will come back up for, for review, for discussion. I specifically remember her saying that. And I don't know if it was the procedures of it that then addressed the posters. And, you know, like, I understand your concern. I understand your concern, Director France.
No, no, no.
Also, we have a specific policy that says any community member, board member, parent, teacher, blah, 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 whoever, all the people, if you have a suggestion for a policy, you can bring it up through the proper channels of Dr. Thomas. And, and so, this, the work that was put in for this, this policy, six months of work, or however long it was taken to review, cannot be dismissed, that, you know, Dr. Thomas was sitting there reviewing it, and, and if he didn't feel it was out of sequence for whatever reason, at that time, Dr. Thomas, again, I don't wanna throw you under the bus, but you could have brought that to the committee's attention, but it was discussed in December.
So there's a slight variation in the memory here. The, one of the, one of the issues was that 904 only deals with third-party.
Third-party, yeah.
Okay? And the question was, that came up, was policies that we don't have that addressed things that are put up internally, which was not covered by 904. And so, the discussion that was brought up was, this policy doesn't cover that. It wasn't, we're going to go and redo the policy, cause it was already expedited out of sequence. It was talking about the policy that we may or may not wanna have about internal. So, not policy 904, it was, if you want a policy of that, that's a whole separate discussion. Because 904 is dedicated to external, third-party items that go into the school, and how that is performed.
So if I, if I may, I know my name's been thrown into the mix a few times, and, and like the rest of you, I don't have all, you know, notes or photographic memories of every, every meeting that I've ever been in. But I will say this. Yes, the strategic plan process, I've been very public about our brand. Kristi and I have been talking a lot about being on-brand, and email signatures, and district-approved signage, all that kinda stuff. So that was part of our, our marketing, if you will, to rebrand around the strat plan, et cetera, and our, you know, the attributes of a learner, all that. There was a conversation at the policy committee meeting around some of the, and 904 currently does not pertain to district signage. It is that marketing, all that, you know, using our kids for, you know, pushing product, et cetera. And so, the, the conversation that came up initially was actually a new policy, 904.1. That's how this whole conversation of internal signage began. And when that was introduced, and then reviewed by legal, which we do with a lot of our policies, so it's not just 904. So I wanna be very clear about that, too. There are some things that get pretty sticky, and we'll ask our legal to put eyes on it. And legal suggested that you merge this, don't write a, a separate 904.1, rewrite 904, because there were things in the 904.1 that they said, there's a lot of exposure here, and you're gonna kinda get yourself set up.
Can I ask you something? Who wrote 904.1?
904.1, Director Johnson brought forward as, as a conversation piece.
Okay.
904.1.
Was that ever introduced to the board, or to say that we were gonna introduce a brand-new policy?
That was not brought into the board. That was brought into the policy committee as part of our conversation of 904, because Emily also had the desk notes that I think Director Atkinson referenced of 904 being discussed at a later date in policy committee. That was around that time, as she was leaving, that was the desk file note that she shared with me, that this is, we, we also left last week's meeting, or whatever it was, trying to refresh our brains, cause it was late and people were fatigued, and we're trying to playback the tapes of that. So there was a discussion at policy committee level, where this was a conversation that was going to happen. This 904, 904.1, and the convergence of that, it was going to happen. Because our 904 only pertained to external, and there was the, to address some of the questions that Vice Chair Bullion brought up, having something internal, and then 904.1 gets introduced, Director Johnson, brand-new to the board, and we said, you know what, this hasn't been briefed with the committee at this time, let's hold on this, so we can introduce it to the committee, and then get some perspective on that. So I think that might have been the next policy committee meeting, I don't know, February or so, or Jan. Yeah, February, yeah, sorry, cause you got seated in January. So, so that's how the convergence of 904 and 904.1 came to be 904, because it was advised by our attorneys to not have a .1 policy as it stood. And so, that got introduced to the policy committee in that February timeframe, and the iteration started to go from there. You know, the, the process of, of review started to go from there. So, so, so again, I, I think, I mean, that's my recollection of process. I might not have it 100%, you know, accurately reflected, but that's my interpretation of the, the chain of events that led to the discussion of introducing that... that led to the discussion of introducing that to the committee and then what gets brought before you today. And, and then also, I believe, I know it was referenced to a couple of you and some from our community, from the committee. I guess at the May meeting, there was bigger discussion. I was actually at my daughter's college graduation, so I was not at that particular meeting where that discussion took place. And it must have been June, beginning of June, that I met with Emily, Amy, or Vice Chair Bullion and Director Johnson. And they were talking about the meeting. I'm like, timeout, I wasn't at this meeting, how did we get to this place? So bring me up to date on that. So they briefed me on that process of discussion that came from that May policy meeting. And then from there, a final review was given back to the attorneys, I believe, to put eyes on that kind of merged language. And I think feedback from the committee that landed that conversation in early June, perhaps. Late May, early June.
Add one bit. If you remember correctly, there was actually a closing discussion within, within the PAC committee to completely remove it all from nine oh four into a completely separate policy altogether. And I don't remember that policy number. I, I have it written. Yes.
I was at that meeting, it was a four hundred series policy.
Yes, I just, I don't have the book. My other notepad.
It was like an employee, it was an employee policy.
So, and then, and then, and then we sat down and basically did comparison of, does this work? It was the, it'll come to me, I don't remember what it was. So, and then we, we sat down and finalized the language because there, there were notes from Director Herman on there of highlights and cleanup language, right? And not everyone is going to agree on things when it comes to policy. And that's, that's okay.
So without the rest of the board's knowledge or awareness, a policy we had just voted on was being revised for revote. And that's, so that's where I'm gonna stick with the procedure.
I'll just add, yeah, and I'll just add one conversation point I had with former administration as well. And that is keeping the nine hundreds whole versus bifurcating whatever policy number or sequence that we're on. If it's pulled out of sequence, even if it was approved, it should have come in with the nine hundreds. So it stays in the nine hundred sequence. And that was one of the things that previous administration was adamant, that we can't keep handpicking stuff out and then putting it into a different sequence because then it would have been reviewed out of the three-year cycle. And then we would have been out of violation of the policy of the board to review every three years.
And, and we did talk about that. And it was discussed because of the requests that kept coming up.
Yes, that's how, but that's how the nine hundred.
I, I get that, but we voted on it and no knowledge to the board from adminis, from, from administration came in to say, oh, now we're changing this back. Even though we agreed to the, to the exception.
Aside from the nine hun, it being part of the nine hundred batch.
Right.
So when, when it's noticed to the board in July that the nine hundreds are gonna be reviewed, that includes every nine hundred.
Right.
Including the one that had just recently passed to keep it in the sequence of the cycle of the nine hundreds.
But that was not informed to the board when we said we were taking it out of sequence just to make sure we were satisfying the original request.
I, I don't recall that, but I'm just saying what we notice every front end of every policy.
I get that. All I'm saying is we made that, I was one of the very first people on the policy committee when we set up the sequence. And we knew we were taking it out of sequence. And we made that one exception.
Understand that.
And then said, we're not gonna do it again because it's on a three-year cycle. We simply will skip it where it's in that sequence.
I don't recall that.
I was in that conversation when we decided to move it up because I was chair at that time. And I know that that was a huge part of the discussion because it can, it's confusing. But because we were only moving it up 30 days, it wasn't that big of a deal.
Well, it would have been, yeah, but we wouldn't have been reviewing policy until September. So it was.
And that's, well.
Not, not 30 days. I mean, we, we wouldn't.
Technically, July first, yeah. And that's what was the discussion of, does it matter one way or the other? Because this has been, it's been outstanding for a long time. It was a request. It had been discussed. You had made the comment.
I understand the logic of expediting. I don't recall the conversation of pulling it out of its own sequence of the nine hundreds because we wouldn't wanna fingerpick any policy out of any sequence because how do we keep track of all the ones that we made special provisions for? So I don't recall that, so I can't speak to that.
Well, when we discussed the agenda, when I went over it with Director Herman, that was the concern. And it's like, okay, how big of a concern is this since July first starts the next year? I mean, it's like June, so, you know. But it was, it was a concern because it had been a request. It had been sitting out there for a while. And, and, and it was something that we definitely didn't wanna keep ignoring when somebody made a request to have it reviewed. Well, not to have the policy reviewed, to have the concept of signage reviewed. It was, kept showing up on our list of things we hadn't done. So where does that leave us now? And I leave it up to the chair.
Well, I would say, you know, I'm, I'm listening to this without any historical perspective. And so I'm trying to, you know, jumble this through my mind. From where I sit, no matter how it got there, it, it's here. It's not, we're not, we're, we're not violating any, any protocol. Nine oh four is part of nine hundred. That's just, that's where I'm landing. You know what? Once more time, this is a meeting in public, not a public meeting. I would very much appreciate keeping the chatter down so we can have our discussion. So from where I sit, we're, we're at first reading tonight. And I would suggest any red line, eliminations, additions be submitted to either Director Johnson or Director Bullion or both. Go ahead. I was just gonna say by August first, but you go ahead.
I'm, the, Director Johnson and I were given the task from the will of the board on the two hundreds, not the nine hundreds. And so I would appreciate to be removed.
You are correct.
Thank you.
When it comes to the board, the policy committee members are supposed to represent the, the discussions of the policy action, Policy Advisory Committee.
In the interim, you know, Chair White, if I may, while we're in the inner transition of HR, I would like to, I, I would be more comfortable with that being submitted to me. So that I could have conversation with the two board directors on the, on the committee, please.
Okay.
I have a, a few questions, comments. I know that the Policy Advisory Committee is just that advisory, just like our teaching and learning, just like our finance. And I know that these committees don't, don't vote, right? They don't take formal votes. They're, they're in an advisory capacity. I still have concerns about the PACs. And I've talked to some, not all, of the PAC committee members, or I'm sorry, the Policy Advisory Committee members. My concern still lies in, several have concerns about some of the edits in this policy that the majority of the, not all, but the majority of the Policy Advisory Committee weren't in line with. I know we, we heard from a few today. And I know we have had some emails into the school board email, which to my knowledge hasn't been responded to. So they have questions about the feedback that they have given at the PAC. Again, I know they don't vote, but when the majority of a Policy Advisory Committee has some thoughts or very minor thoughts and then they see this, that's concerning to me. That is misrepresentation in my mind. Again, I didn't talk to every member of the Policy Committee. So, so that's a concern for me. Now, knowing that legal has looked at this, I know from talking to one of the members, you know, is it possible, and I know this doesn't happen very often, at least to my knowledge, is it possible that we can send this back to the Policy Advisory Committee to review again and have another conversation? Because I know that they were, they knew that legal was going to be reviewing it. The Policy Advisory Committee hasn't seen what legal advice was provided. And so is that, again, I know this probably doesn't happen very often, is that a possibility that we can take this since we're, we moved this to a first reading and it's not a final reading? Can we bring this back to Policy Advisory Committee? And I'm, apologies, I don't know when the next one is, probably when the school year starts, September, okay. So there's, that's my question. And then number two, if, if we have these advisory committees and collectively, again, majority, not all, if a majority, you know, thinks or has kind of a, a sense of how they want to move, then I think we need to honor that, knowing we don't have to agree with it as a board. We don't have to agree with everything and quite, you know, we go through policies all the time. But if, if this, if something like this is being misrepresented, why do we have an advisory committee in the first place? So if that, those are the two concerns I have. So concern, misrepresentation, number one. Concern number two, they had some questions that they weren't given any answers to. And then a question about if we can put this back to the PAC, PAC for further review and discussion.
Director Bullion.
So I, I appreciate your concerns, Director Olstad, and the community's concerns, the Policy Advisory Committee members' concerns. One thing that I'd like to state regarding the concern regarding misrepresentation. From the May fifteenth Policy Advisory Committee meeting, Director Herman, along with Direct, Dr. Thomas and Director Johnson and myself, we had another meeting. We had a follow-up meeting the following week. So there was, we had just, and was there anyone else in that meeting? No, the four of us. We, we had a follow-up meeting regarding that. And we discussed things. I know that there was language that we were trying to work through. You know? So I just, I wanna, I wanna say that I hear the concern regarding misrepresentation. But there was one more meeting between the district and Director Johnson and I, who serve on the Policy Advisory Committee. There was one more meeting with four of us. And so then when, when, when the policy was presented to the board, things that were not in, in people's perceptions, if they weren't discussed at the Policy Advisory Committee, I still can't grasp exactly what. Because I'm looking through all of my notes. I'm a note taker. I'm looking through all of my notes from all of the different meetings. And yes, there's, there's things that's been changed, but I don't know that it's misrepresentation. I, I feel like we were trying to come to a place to bring to the board that the board can discuss and then move forward on. So I, I hear you, I appreciate the concerns. I have no problem with it going back to the Policy Advisory Committee other than the fact that it's just more time. But, you know, it's, that, I just wanted to add that added context. But I, I hear, I hear that, but I don't know that misrepresentation is the right word.
Lisa, then Mary.
Yeah, Chair White, I'm just looking back at the meeting minutes. Thank goodness for Director Herman for doing good meeting minutes. It was introduced on February thirteenth. It was discussed on March fifteenth. And on May, May fifteenth, well, it looks like March fifteenth, the whole entire meeting was dedicated. There was only nine oh four discussed on March fifteenth. And then on May fifteenth, I attended that meeting. And that was the primary discussion of the meeting. So I, that's a lot of meetings talking about one policy. So I, and I didn't have access to this when I was in that meeting because I was just an observer. But I'd like to know how many changes have been made that the policy, I mean, there's always gonna be changes coming out of policy committee meeting. And policy is board, board work is pol, policy work is board work. So while I respect the work of the committee, I just think they've had three meetings to discuss this. So I would question why we would, I mean, you know, what else is gonna, what else is gonna come out of that, is guess is my point.
Well, I think that's my point, is they've had a lot of these, they've had a couple of meetings to discuss this and there's still a lot of confusion. So that kind of goes to my point.
Yeah, and I think Director Olstad, I think that's why we're here having this discussion today. And I am grateful that it got moved to where we're at, we're at today as a, you know, as for further discussion. So I don't necessarily think it needs to go back to the, the Policy Committee. But I think we can have as much discuss, I mean, we are elected by our community to do policy work. So I think we can have a lot of conversation here amongst our board members.
Director France.
So a couple of points of clarification. From what I understood from the chronology is it was nine oh four point one, not nine oh four that went back. Number, so, so it wasn't until later that nine oh four dot one and nine oh four, apparently in some meetings outside the whole board purview, were asked to be discussed. But I do ask this. Why change the original nine oh four that was approved in June a year ago? What is the incentive behind the change? What is it that members of the board, certain members of the board are trying to do here? What, why, why was the change needed?
In my, in my perception or my understanding, it is the procedures on if there's, if there is issue with signs in the building having, having that laid out.
But that's not the changes that were made. The changes that were made essentially say that the board is going to determine what teachers put in their classroom.
Where does it say that?
Well, that's assumed in the language that's put in there. And I think that's where the question of the.
Let's go to that spot.
Okay.
We're talking about four D?
We're talking about the changes in two places.
So it'd be two E? And forty?
Formally approved by documents or resources, means any materials, documents or resources formally approved by the school board or school administration. Why is the school board in there at all? These are classroom level. We are a governing board, not a managing board.
So Director France, this, I, I asked the same question, but then my memory goes back to the fact that we just approved a library materials policy. And we have the exact same flow of approvals with that same policy. And so I, I don't disagree with us because at the end of the day, you know, we are the board.
And we represent our community. Library materials are different from instructional materials and things that a teacher puts in their classroom.
But it is in that policy and that's the hierarchy that we approved.
You're not comparing apples to apples.
I am clearly comparing apples to apples, so.
So I wanna, I wanna cut to the chase here. The reason for the changes in here were so the board can walk into a classroom and tell a teacher they can't put something on a wall? Because if that's the case, then we need to specifically say.
Misrepresenting the intent of the policy. But you're still, I understand you have a question to ask. I mean, just from sitting on the board and reading the emails that we've received about controversial items in the school district, we've, we've all seen the emails, right? This is not, this is just not one person complaining in our district. We see the emails. And we, I think this also goes back to the strategic plan where we are tasked with aligning our, our policies to our strategic plan. It goes back to signage that, like you said, is unbranded, on-brand. Also creating unity, creating a, a less distracting and learning environment. And when I say unity, there are people in this district that are opposed to a lot of political signs that are in our district. And I can tell you, if somebody had a red elephant, elephant sign hanging in their classroom, we'd hear about it all also. So I, I think in order, you know, in order to, I think that's just really the, the gist of it. If somebody wants to answer the question, where does this come from?
I'm gonna ask another question because you seem to be more involved with this policy than the two committee members on the policy.
I just attended the meetings. I've had nothing to do with this policy.
Well, that goes beyond, but.
Why does that go beyond, Director France?
And, and the thing is, is that I just wanna say that I am not in an agreement with the changes. The changes were legal. The changes followed the model policy. They, these new. They, these new changes do not follow the model policy. And add in language that injects the board into a management role into the classroom. And I think that is the primary goal of this particular, of these changes. And I think that's what is trying to be hidden in here. And that is what I think that the Policy Committee had an issue with. That is what I have an issue with, that is what the teachers have an issue with. And they should have an issue with it. Because if you put up a map that has the Gulf of Mexico instead of the Gulf America on it, I have a feeling you are gonna be the first one to complain. Is that a true statement?
If it looks like, if it's, if it's upsetting somebody, then we have a policy that they can go through and follow. Right now, we don't have a policy, to be honest with you.
We do have a policy, the, yes, well, we did have a policy, we still do have a policy, because this one has not yet been approved.
We don't have a policy currently that addresses that. Is that correct policy? I mean, I'd like to hear from the two policy members. I mean, you guys worked on this, so.
To say we, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not following why we, the comment that we don't have a policy.
To address signage in the classrooms.
Well, right now, as, as, we don't need a, we don't need a policy. I could go into a classroom right now and make a determination on how to regulate what is on the walls or what's in the classroom. As, as district speech, because that's, I mean, I'm just letting you all know, that's the authority I would have as a superintendent. That I would delegate even to principals or whatever, like, that exists right now.
Yeah, Dr. Thomas, I think you make a very good point that needs to be reiterated. That as, if you could speak more about that, as far as employee's speech in our district, what, 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 how that's different than just even student's speech? Or anything.
Well, there's, there, there are laws that do protect teachers differently than students.
Right.
Specifically teachers. And I can't speak to that off the top of my head which law that is. But there are some different ways of, of freedoms of speech that teachers or educators, you know, compared to like a student can say here, you know, different things like that.
Right.
But to the question here about which policy currently gives, I'll just use me, gives me the authority to do that. I don't need a policy to do that. I have that authority right now to go into a classroom and say, I don't want that particular illustration of whatever it might be on the walls. For whatever reason. I have that authority as a superintendent, okay?
Right, because they're, they're employees of our district.
Right, and so I can set the context for the expectations that I may have. And, and so, I guess, I don't know who asked that question about. The policy, but I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know of a policy that tells me that. It's just part of the inherent managerial rights that I have as a superintendent.
And, and as a board, as a governing board, we have one employee, and that's a superintendent. To have board members go into classrooms and take pictures of classrooms because of their concern about a sign on a wall or anything like that. Is not only wholly inappropriate, we're way overstepping our bounds. And if we're supposed to be trusting the teachers, as by the way, all, all the emails, even the ones that were pro. There were very few that were pro getting rid of the equity thing. But of those, they said, you need to trust the teachers to do what's right in the classroom. And they said that, you, almost unanimously. What this policy does, and the or statement in there, is basically says the school board can walk into a classroom and say. Instructor so-and-so, you cannot put this on your wall, okay? And, and encourage people. And most of the complaints about the signs in the buildings do not come from people with students in our buildings. They come from people who do not have.
Point of order, Director France, point of order. That is, first of all, your comments, your comments are, I understand that, but that is completely, first of all.
Point of order is not, is not appropriate there.
First of all, to insinuate that any board member would walk in to a classroom, that's really, that's just so sad that you would even say that. I mean, honestly, Director France, it's incredibly sad. I mean, well, it's incredibly sad. And so, I, I think what we're trying to do is solve a problem that we have a dis, in our district. That is what policy is, it's about solving a problem. And you cannot sit here, you cannot tell me, you can honestly sit here at this board table and tell me that you have not seen the emails. Of the concerns of parents about signage in our district. So, so, and, and, and that is what this policy is trying to solve.
So if the concerns of the parents are about signage, they can go to the superintendent. Okay? The superintendent manages that through the principals and the teachers. That is not our role.
So if I may.
I think Director Johnson's hand was up.
Go ahead, sorry, I didn't see that, go for it.
I just wanted to clarify that by no way, I think, to speak for myself. Anything I had to put into this, nor with the policy nine oh four point one. Was it the intention to have a board director walk into a classroom and tell somebody to take anything off the wall? So I just wanted to make that clear. It was simply to make sure that, one, right? There's a clear outline, right? A chain of command, if somebody has a complaint. There you go, right? Which is in there.
Well, it has the or in there though, Director Johnson.
It does have the order in there.
And we have a chain of command, and that is the superintendent.
So, I, I mean, when I read the language, and again, I have been removed from Policy Committee, but just reading the language and like the use of the word or. I actually appreciate, I think that, you know, we're not saying an individual school board member could do this. I, you know, we as a board, meaning the majority vote, would have the authority to, like, if there were a major concern brought forth. That maybe Dr. Thomas approved, that we were getting more complaints on. I would think as a board, a majority vote would have the authority to say, no, you need to take it down, or yes, we accept it. That's the way I read the language, not any individual board member, certainly. And, and only in the event that if there was some major escalation, that maybe we disagreed with administration. Like, I, I don't, I don't feel like this gives us the authority as individuals to remove things from teachers' walls.
But we already have that. If something comes up, we can tell the superintendent we wanna have discussion, and we have that with everything.
Sure, so this sort of just reiterates that statement, in my opinion, how this reads.
But it has or.
Which or?
So point, I'm sorry, point two under definitions, E is, I think, what we're looking at. And it says approved materials firmly approved by the school board or district administration.
Right.
So maybe it needs, maybe the suggestion is to reword that, to say, by the district administration, you know, ultimate authority. I don't know how other policies are reworded. But if that's the concern, like, I, I, again, I'm just more wording, if that matters, but.
All I'm saying is that.
We're not giving individual authority to board members, as I think.
Is that the suggestion?
There wasn't a need for part E to begin with, that's the first thing. The second thing is the or in there makes the school board equal to administration on these decisions. And we should not be, we are a governing board, the superintendent, and we have a hierarchy.
Sure, so how would you suggest the language?
We don't need the language, that's what I'm saying. We already have a hierarchy that's already in our two hundred policies of our hierarchy. We already have it where we are a governing board. And we delegate the day-to-day administration to the superintendent, who then has the right to delegate it to everyone else. When the board injects themselves in the day-to-day work. We are introducing chaos, and we are, none of us here are qualified to make the decisions in that area. So the whole purpose behind this statement is not only not needed. But also it inj, it injects a brand-new hierarchy that someone and people have kinda tried to take advantage of. And I am not happy with that. That is not our role.
So, again, I feel like personally, again, me just looking at this coming not from policy, and I haven't been privy to a lot of the discussion. The approved materials language around, if you took out the school board out of this language, we don't really have it anywhere stating basically that our. Our resources are gonna be aligned to strategic plan and, and district-wide initiatives. I think that, it, it seems like to me that's how I read the intent of that point. So, I mean, again, taking out the word school board, that's how I read the intent. Now, I think the question becomes, you know, is it, maybe we remove that and we reserve the authority if there was some sort of escalation? I don't know, but. That's my perspective.
We have that in procedures already.
It is covered in D.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you wanted to take the, the school board completely out of E.
I think, I think that that's fine.
The school board does approve the materials anyways.
True.
No, actually, we delegate the classroom materials to the superintendent into the. The strategic plan does not say the school board does anything. The strategic plan has a bunch of principles for which we're gonna go.
Strategic plan is approved by the board.
Yes, it is. But the strategic plan is not, is not discreet at all, is a series of principles. And that's it. And it's the principles that just about every other school district shares. So I, I, I question why, and I'm gonna go back to it. Why was this even modified to begin with?
Are we working with removing the school board from letter E? Would, would we like to go to reworking letter E? Is that your suggestion, Director France?
My first suggestion is letter E really isn't required at all, because the, the superintendent already has the approved materials. That is embedded in his role, and he delegates that out to principals, other administrators, and, and all that.
I could see how that E is redundant.
Yeah.
And probably isn't needed, because if you're looking for a procedural way for someone to address a concern, it's covered in D. Because it kinda works its way up.
I do like the statement of having approved materials, basically stating something that we want our materials to align with the strategic plan. Instruction materials, district initiatives. I think that's the piece of the statement that I actually like. But again, if it's the school board piece that is the point of conflict, then I would say just strike that. And that's, you know, we're ultimately on D.
Well, okay, so, the strategic plan, again, is not discreet. There's nothing in there that tells us what materials are in there, there's no alignment to it. It's, 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 it actually opens the door to weaponize the strategic plan to try and manipulate it. And that's not what the strategic plan is for. Basically, it's a series of principles that says we honor academic excellence, we honor inclusion, we honor all those things in there. We honor community involvement. There's no approved materials that would, there's no line, there's no linear line to that. So what, so the whole addition of E, and then the or statement in there. I mean, there had to be a reason why this was even added to begin with. And I'm trying to get to the bottom of it, because I never got an answer to my question about the map. The map. If a map goes up in a, in a teacher's classroom, to be blunt, and it says Gulf of Mexico. Director Actonson, are you and the group that you have in your so-called community going to start emailing? I'm being honest.
Excuse me? That is so offensive, Director France, I can't even start. And, and I would say.
Let's get back to the language.
Yeah, let's just get back to, and keep politics out of our board table. And keep politics out of our district, okay?
Honestly, I believe the whole reason E is put in there is because of politics, and that's what concerns me. The board does not belong in the classroom.
This is a first reading. So, um, do we have consensus that E is even needed in, in, at all? Because I think, I think, I think it's redundant. I could, I could live with scratching it, because you're, you're asking for a definition of approved materials. And then the redundancy is board-approved instructional materials and other things. I, I, I don't think it's necessary, I think it's, again, redundant. If we're, if the goal was to give our, give the community, whoever that may be, a procedure to address a concern. It's covered in D. I don't, I don't think this is needed at all. And I, I wonder if the board could live without it.
Well, my only concern about that is when you go to the next page, and I don't know, there's no numbers, so I'm just gonna say section one, two, three, four. On section four, where it's in blue. It does talk about approved materials, and I, I would believe that that's why it's defined.
Wouldn't prove, wouldn't approved materials be self-explanatory?
No, I, I think it needs to be, if we take the word out there, then I think we need to take the language from E. Which says including but not limited to the district's curriculum, the strategic plan, board-approved instructional materials, district-wide initiatives, and other. Fundational documents that guide the district's mission, vision, and operations. So I think if we're gonna take the definition off, I think we need to take that sentence and move it over to that section. So that we have clear understanding of how the materials that enrich students' learning experiences by supporting enhancing paralegal savage area schools.
Okay, so we also have the paragraph in there, that said the superintendent's schools are designated will implement this policy within the scope of federal and state laws and exercise professional judgment under three. As necessary.
Yep.
In the best interest of students. So we're, we're delegating to the superintendent there also. We already have a policy on approved instructional materials. And again, this is third-party whatever coming in here. So E technically is not needed at all.
I would tend to agree. So, I mean, I'm trying to get to a, catch us on, on this particular paragraph.
I actually like it stated that we are trying to have the things on, you know, our, our materials aligned to either the curriculum that they're teaching, the strategic plan. Board-approved, you know, district-wide initiatives, whatever they are. I think that, to me, that's important, like, I don't, context matters. If you bring up the situation about a map, I mean, if that's in a history classroom, fine. But if it's in another classroom trying to make a political statement, that's a different story. Like, I think it's, context matters. And I do think that the things in our classrooms should be relevant to the instruction.
But that's covered in the very last paragraph of section three.
Is it though?
Yes, it is.
I don't feel like it's stated explicitly.
It's not, we don't, we don't state it out in, in, like, we don't, we don't, like I said, if we took that definition and we moved it over here, I think we'd be good.
And we have a policy on instructional materials already.
So my question to the board is, can we live without E? And I'm looking for thumbs up, thumbs down. I can live without it.
I can live without it.
I can live without it.
All right, then we're gonna scratch E.
Question under general statement of policy, the second paragraph, where it talks about federal and state laws. Which ones? The general statement of policy, the second paragraph that starts with the superintendent of schools. It says the policy within the scope of federal and state laws. I, I don't know what those are pertaining to, any, if you can shed any light.
I think those would be the legal references in the back.
Yeah, those are just the legal references.
At the bottom.
Yeah. And that, that applies default anyways, regardless, yeah. It's, 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 it's just, it's, it's kinda window dressing there, but it just reinforces the statutes at the bottom of the policy.
Thank you. And then the last sentence in that paragraph.
In the best interest of students, in cases of differences.
Yeah, it's, it starts in cases of differences of opinion, the decision of the school board will be final.
Yeah, I don't.
I disagree with that.
I, I disagree with that too. And I don't think that's needed if we take E out.
I'm sorry.
I, I believe that we already have rules that says the superintendent is our only employee, and if people have concerns, there's, we have to follow the hierarchy. And then if we wanna bring it up as a board, we can bring up anything we want as a board. We don't have to have these things written in here like this, and also be duplicative. And, and potentially, well, incendiary. Thank you for bringing that up.
Do we have that process in other policy?
We do. The library policy, curriculum policy, it's in a lot of different policies, because ultimately, we're the board. I mean, that's, and I get, I don't need to hear we're a managing board versus a governing board, I, I'm fully aware of the difference.
I'm just wondering, I'm just saying that, that those concerns that I'm hearing, I think they're covered in D. It gives anyone in this district who has a concern, a ladder, a ladder to climb.
As we leave D written as D, then I can see where that could be scratched.
You could put a period.
But as long as D, because it is duplicative, it does say it in both places.
You could put a period after state laws, or.
And we don't repeat it everywhere, nor do we need to. Any complaints regarding anything should always go to the superintendent or to the school administrator. We have that in our own. We have that in our own policies, and they currently do that. So, again, it's duplicative. And here's the problem, when you put duplicative language in policies, is when you change it, or let's say we change it in the 200s, for instance, then you've got to go through every other policy and change it. You only need it once. And that's the whole reason why you want efficiency in these things, and that's one of the reasons why, I believe Director Herman, before she left, started to make these things a little bit more streamlined, to say if it's already in one policy, you don't need to say it in another, because it's a maintenance nightmare for administration.
Chair White?
Yes.
May I suggest that we just do the period at the end of the first sentence, at the end of students?
Director Johnson, are you in 4D?
Three, nope, nope.
Second paragraph of three?
Yes, general statement of policy, second paragraph. I just, I don't, I don't have my other notebook here, I switched, I ran out of room, and I don't know why Director Herman put all that other stuff in there, and I know that this was sent illegal, just with, with all the other annotations that she made.
So scratch it.
Because I know you suggested, right, period, end of state and federal laws, so just scratch the last sentence as...
The period would be after the word necessary?
No, after the word students.
After students.
And I agree with that. I think that's...
And then you're striking the last sentence.
And that's strike the last sentence?
Yeah.
I agree, it is covered.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as...
Are we closer to good?
So we have E, E struck up under two, and then in the, in section three, second paragraph, our period is ending after students.
Students, yep.
And the rest is the same.
So second reading on August, is it 11th? August 11th.
When is the next policy committee meeting? Director Johnson's in September.
All right, I appreciate it, guys. Any, next, any general administrative reports? Are there any admin reports? Probably not.
No, I'm sorry, I know we're looking at 940, but, so team, this is where we would typically have reports, but just for the sake of time, it's the two of you, Michael as well, if you'd like to say anything or just introduce yourself to the board, or take that time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, everyone, I'm Michael Knutson again. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Really just doing my best to keep the trains moving in human resources and administrative services. Emily had big shoes to fill, and I'm hoping with, along with Dr. Thomas, that we can find a wonderful candidate to, to fill those shoes. In the meantime, I'd just like to shout out our incredible payroll and human resources team. They've done an incredible job picking up the slack. In the meantime, with three big transitions across the organization, there have been people stepping up left and right the last few weeks to just rise to any challenges that have come up, and just wanted to express my appreciation to all those folks who have done that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, very happy to be here at Para Lake Savage Area Schools, and I echo the fact that the staff that, in one day, it's like, it's so evident how the quality of the staff that I am going to be able to work with is wonderful. So I appreciate that, I'm looking forward to that, and I am, I am, I'm very excited to be here and to be able to provide some support and clarity where possible.
Welcome.
Just to keep the trains moving, great phrase. This should only take 30, 40 minutes, so. In other roles and other places, I've sometimes been accused of being overly verbose, but I think I'll fit right in. And so I just thank you for the opportunity. It's great to join Dr. Thomas and these fine folks. I would echo the same thing. The staff is super committed. This is day five, so wait till day five. Super aligned, and it's clear they're just so committed to kids and the community, and so it's a privilege to join that team, and I look forward to working with all of you. So thanks, thank you very much for the welcome.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any board reports, a little slower right now? Any recent, any bit? Nope, okay. Then we are to future events, a board retreat next Monday at 6 o'clock till 8:00, hard stop at 8:00. As we voted on tonight, the school board filing period for the seat that I currently hold will be July 29th through August 12th. Our next regular meeting is August 11th. If there's nothing more to come before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may.
By Director Boylan.
Second.
By Director Franz. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries at 7-0. Thank you.